No, this is 2021. December 21st, 2000. I knew what I was thinking. Uh, roll call please.
Grace LaRosa.
Here.
And Andrew Obanowicz.
I'm here.
Mary Ann Turner here, Charlie Master Birdy.
Here.
Kelly Davis. Robert Quasnik.
Here.
Kathy Plopper.
Here.
Rich Stroney.
Here.
Chairman, you have a full compliment, you don't need any alternates. Can't hear a word you're saying.
Hear me now.
Yep.
All right, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States.
To the Republic.
Have an agenda in front of me.
I'd like to make a motion to push bylaw review to after uh, number six.
Before. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mola Rosa.
Yes.
Andrew Obanowicz.
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner, yes, Charlie Master Birdy. Shake your head, Charlie. Kelly Davis.
Yes.
Can't hear you anymore.
Be on my computer, not on my Bluetooth.
Don't care what you do, stop doing it.
Is that better?
Can hear you much better.
Okay. Um, so we have the next, we have the application.
Legal notice, ZBA 2020-12-04 7981 Enfield Street and Four Willard Avenue Auto Location Approval Application for a General's Repair's License to operate a general repairs business in an existing garage, 78-81 Enfield Street LLC. Owners and applicant map O35 slash lot 217 BL Zone.
Will the applicant uh, state your name and address for the record?
Moshe Ronan, 24 Two Trail Drive, Long Menno, Mass. 01106.
Carl, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Again, Carl Andalina, Feige and Andalina, 47 Spring Street, Windsor Locks, on behalf of the applicant. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here tonight uh, asking for a location approval under General Statutes 1214-54. As you know, the ZBA in the town of Enfield acts as an agent of the state of Connecticut to approve the location of applicants who are requesting uh, general repairs license from the DMV. So this is the first stop or step in that process. Once this process is over, assuming we have an approval, then allow the building inspector and fire marshal to get in and because they have to sign off on our, our form or state form, and then we'll apply to the Department of Motor Vehicles for our license. Sure, you're all familiar with this location. It's um, in the northern end of Enfield Street. Less than a couple hundred yards from the 91 on and off ramps located at the corner of Willard Avenue and Enfield Street. There's a front portion of the building, which looks like uh, you know, any sort of strip mall store. That might be located at Enfield Street and behind uh, is a very large warehouse facility. They're all connected. I'm sure you've read Jennifer's report, which details, I think, uh, does a good job in detailing the uses that have been undergone in this property previous. Two owners of the property who did exactly what my client wants to do. My client is in the business of selling tires uh, at retail and then installing those tires um, in, in the facility that's located in the back. So. So um, in back in the 60s for, for many years, uh, the, the previous uh, operation was known as Intertakes Interstate Terms. They were, they were operating there for quite some time. And after they left, a uh, in 1981, another applicant was granted a general repair's license by this board to do essentially the same thing. There were other approvals that are uh, we don't care about. There was a um, I guess a rental place, like you rent trailers inside. It's, has nothing to do with what we're gonna do. We simply want to operate uh, the general repair's license facility, selling tires, as I said, on the front and uh, calling them in the back. And there'll be certain other automotive type uh, pairs made there. While you're getting your tires, have a brake job or new strip butts put in. You know, things like that. The tires in the front end operation of a vehicle. We don't change oil, uh, we don't do any of that kind of work. So essentially, that's the application in that show. We'd like to entertain any questions that the board might have.
Any questions of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. On the application, it says that the. But then on the staff comments, it says that.
You're echoing, I can't understand you.
I don't know why I am. Okay, Ken. I don't know if it's me.
No, you're good.
It's better now.
Okay, on the application, it says that it is not in a Level A or B Aquifer Protection Area, but on the staff comments, it says it is. Jennifer, can you please explain?
Uh, yep, um, a lot of times applicants might not know where to get that information, but if you do look at the map, they will need to register with the Aqua Protection Agency.
What kind of problems is that gonna cause for this type of business?
Um, it's just gonna be inspections on our end to make sure that uh, any hazardous materials are not being stored outside, um, and that they're in the proper containers and there are no floor drains that might um, lead to any nearby wetlands or drainage um, out into any uh, portion over the aquifer that may be affected.
How would you do that since no conditions were added? Will, how will the office?
There's different state statutes for the Aqua Protection Agency that govern that. So they have to register over the aquifer um, for their use. No matter whether the um, the use was approved by planning and zoning in the past or not, the, there's just different rules that apply to the Aqua for Protect, Protection Zone um, and the Aqua for Protection Agency, uh, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, they really govern that.
Right, but is it going to be written in the, in the application that you, you know, at some point or another, I'm gonna have to come in and sign something if this moves forward? Is that gonna be written in there? So it's in the documents?
Uh, I mean, you don't really have to do that because it's, it's a requirement no matter what. Like if they had to go to planning and zoning after this, you wouldn't have to condition it that it has to go to planning and zoning. It just, it does have to go to Aqua Protection. For registration.
So.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mary Ann. I think you're just saying you'd like to have the application corrected to show that it is in the Aqua Protection.
I just wanna make sure that we don't lose it in the sauce.
Okay, we can, I mean, we can have the applicant uh, fix the application and initial it.
Okay. Um, I guess uh, to Attorney Landalina, are you saying that because in 1991 and there was a variance on the property for the 2,000 feet to zero feet? Is that you see this as a variance?
No.
Okay.
You're not asking for a variance.
And you don't read that as a variance?
With what happened in 1991 or 2001? Yeah, there was, it was granted in 2001. It allowed the building to go essentially.
I'm sorry, Rob, what?
Are you referring to 1981? Yeah, okay.
You're referring to the variance from 91?
Eight one, eighty one.
Eighty one, yes. Yeah, at that time, uh, whoever the applicant was came to you for two things. First, for a variance to reduce the uh, the setback from 2,000 feet to zero feet. You must have at that time, distance set between uh, garages or repairs licensed facilities. And you gave them a variance for that as well as the local approval under. You're not asking now, that's already been granted.
Right, but I wanna make sure we're clear that the variance was not about the certificate of suitability, as they called it back then. 2,000 feet went to zero.
Correct.
That was the variance.
Right, from the setback that you had to maintain between like businesses.
Right, from what I understand.
Yeah.
Owner of this property and the thing across the street.
Across the street.
They were owned by the same applicant.
Okay, that I did not know, but the operation across the street, I think, is still, still ongoing.
There's a, right.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that being said, the, this is a business local application and our table 5.20 on page 62 of your zoning books, for all of you who'd like to go look at this, it says that in a BL Zone, there are no motor vehicle repair garages.
Yeah, we're, we're non-conforming use as to that. That's a zoning question, and we are, we're not conforming use.
But we're not, we're not planning and zoning, we're zoning board of appeals.
I understand, so that, that issue's, if it, if it needs to be settled, which I don't believe it does, it's gonna be settled at the zoning commission, the planning and zoning commission, not before this board.
Are you going in front of planning and zoning?
If the staff tells us we need to because they don't believe it's a non-conforming use, then I guess we'll go before them. But at this point, I believe it to be a legal non-conforming use that doesn't require uh, anything from the planning and zoning commission.
Why do you think it's a legal non-conforming use?
Well, it's either been, it's either an illegal non-conforming use because it was used for this purpose prior to, I assume, the BL Zone having been approved. Some previous time, how old is the BL Zone?
I, I tried to find out, I don't know.
Yeah.
But, but the point is, it is what it is now.
Correct.
We can't go back to what it could have, or should have, or might have been back then. Plus, the property for a general repairs license has not done that type of business as best I can see since 1996. So it's not like it's one of these rolling. This is, this is brand spanking new.
Well, but, but the use itself is, is still not conforming. It hasn't been abandoned. And especially under the new legislation that's been in effect for a few years. It's, you know, unless the applicant or a prior owner, you know, essentially puts something in writing that they're abandoning a non-conforming use, it remains a non-conforming use, even if the use has been changed to other uses in the interim.
Chris Lee, I don't see how we can move forward with that question because we do not decide non-conforming uses. That really is a planning and zoning thing.
Not asking you to, we're asking you to look at this uh, property in relationship to the, the traffic which is going to be generated by this use in its proximity to schools, playgrounds, and churches. Those are the standards under the former uh, 14-55, which looks like it's been repealed, but actually hasn't, and the courts have said, those are the only standards that can be applied by ZBA. So we're asking you to look at it from that perspective. Is there a traffic issue out here uh, related to our proposed use? Or is there a problem given our proximity to churches, playgrounds, or schools?
That may be so, but if we were to get this uh, repair's license and then send you back to planning and zoning, Lori, Jen, and they deny it as a non-conforming use, or wouldn't it be better to start with them and then come back?
Typically, you start with the location. I, I'm sorry, Carl. All right, I'm gonna go. Typically, you start with the location approval, then send it to planning and zoning, because if you don't get the location approval, then there's no point in going through all the site plan. However, with that said, based on the history of the site, I see this as a legal, non-conforming grandfathered use. I don't see any need to send it back to planning. They're proposing no changes except for internal.
We don't have any of that information here. That's not in the staff report.
It's part, well, the property history shows that the use has been approved for that site, um, dating back many years. And again, and again, just because um, it, the use changed from a general repairs garage to a U-Haul facility and then to the electrical wholesalers. We've run into this question before with planning and zoning. Abandonment really does need to be something in writing from the owner of the property saying that they intend to abandon a non-conforming use.
How many people have owned this property since the company that's now selling it? If, if that company has, if the owner of those properties have moved from multiple owners, technically, wouldn't you have said they've abandoned it because they don't own it anymore?
No.
Well, the use stays with the property.
Ah, this is.
The use stays with the property, the variance is stay with the property, and case law states currently that unless there was an actual intent to abandon a use, it, the non-conforming status stays.
But the non-conforming use is clearly in our business local uh, Lori, that we don't allow it.
Right, but it's grandfathered.
Up, it doesn't say that. Where does it say it's grandfathered anywhere? You guys throw grandfather around like I have one.
It's part of the statutes.
I have a copy of 1454, you telling me there's another one?
So, but again, the, the purview here is to decide whether or not this location is proper or not. Not whether or not it meets zoning regulations, but whether or not the location based on schools, churches, and so on, and the traffic is, is proper for this use. And there is a history showing that it has been this and, and other similar uses since like 1966.
But since 1966, the world has changed.
Yes, but this still has legal status as a non-conforming use based on its history.
Yeah, just because the um, regulations have changed doesn't mean that we can then stop uses that were previously, previously approved after the regulations have changed, which is something.
But what if they came into compliance? When does compliance li, line up with the zoning rules?
Only, Madam Commissioner, the only time it does is when, at this point in the status of the law, is when the owner physically puts something in writing, it may be recorded on the land records or not, and says, "I am abandoning the prior use."
I believe when I sell my property, I've abandoned any use I had on that property. If, if I sell a piece of property in a hundred years from now, you know, somebody wants to do the same thing I did, I, I could, can't, you can't seek me out to find, me to, to write a letter saying, "Yeah, I abandoned it. A hundred years gone by, I'm dead." I, I mean, when somebody, the person that owned the garage before sold the garage. He got rid of it. It hasn't been a garage since he owned it. The guy that bought it from him didn't make it a garage. Therefore, I believe the use was abandoned.
But with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, that does not comport with the law in the state of Connecticut. The law in the state of Connecticut, as it exists right now today, is that it's almost impossible, absent something in writing from the owner, that they're abandoning a prior use. Then the commission cannot determine that the use was abandoned. Abandon has to do with intent, and they strengthened that law a few months, a few years ago with another statute that basically is, I'm just telling you what it says, that, you know, commission has to prove that we had, some prior owner had an intent to abandon. I'm telling you, there is no evidence to support that claim.
I believe, I believe a sale of a property is evidence.
Well, with all due respect, again, that's not what the law says.
Does the law state that, that a sale of a property does not count? It just says that I need to prove there was intent to abandon.
Do you have any evidence in front of you that the use was abandoned at any time?
Did he sell the property?
Well, that, that's, you're saying that's enough of a, of an intent to abandon selling the property?
Correct.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, your staff is telling you that's incorrect. And I'm telling you, as an attorney, having done this work for 30 years, that is, you're also incorrect. Sale of the property, all right, has nothing to do with the use. The use, a, a non-conforming use stays with a property forever until the owner at the time abandons the use. And it's not just selling the property, the owner must do something more um, clear, more explicit.
He no longer holds rights to the property. So once he sells it, he can never abandon those rights, then is what you're telling me.
It would be up to the new owner. The new owner could say, "Look, I'm gonna put an electrical warehouse here." But I know, since I don't want to abandon the use as a, a general repairs facility, I'm not gonna abandon that use. I still have it. So I have that, so to speak, in my pocket. That remains and runs with the property.
With, with all due respect, the new owner does not have that right because he doesn't have a K7. He, he has no.
He would have the right to apply for it.
Right.
Apply for one, but he doesn't have a, he doesn't have a non-legal, non-conforming uh, automotive repair facility because he doesn't have a K7.
Yes, he does have. He has a legal non-conforming right to that repair facility.
So maybe we need to get our attorney to give us this in writing, Lori, so it doesn't put you and Jen in a position.
If that's what you want, but I do truly believe that we are.
I don't disagree that you believe it. I just don't wanna run down a road that we got an issue with. Just saying. Our zoning rules are clear.
I believe there's got to be more to it, and I've been saying this since we, since the state dropped this in our lap. There's got to be more to looking at these, these properties on whether or not it's too close to a school or a church or so forth, because we wouldn't need a public hearing for any of that. That would be something that Jen would do in the office and say, "Nope, it's far enough away."
Well, this, the legislature determined many years ago that you, you had to have a public hearing for these types of applications, and this was in, and they narrowly defined what your role was here. That's it. You can, you can, you can be concerned about issues of traffic and the proximity of the location with respect to churches, playgrounds, and schools. That's the narrow, you're acting not as a ZBA, you're acting as an agent of the state of Connecticut in this application. And you've been given a narrowly defined and narrow set of criteria upon which you can base your decision. So that is it, respectfully, Mr. Chairman. So if you, if you think you need a, something from the town attorney, obviously, it's your prerogative to ask.
I wasn't the one that asked for that, so if Mary Ann would like, if Commissioner Turner would like a, a opinion from the town attorney, then we'll get one.
Right, because we have an opinion from the town attorney. Previously, and this was not one of the things they talked about, since our zoning rules are clear that BL Zones do not allow motor vehicle operations, I think we should ask. And then let him or she or her or them or whoever it is, send it back. Once they answer the question, written away, we've asked them to ask the question, Chairman, then we could move forward with this. Because that would just mean all, all the time that, and again, I have a copy of the statute 54, Attorney Landalina, is there another one I need to read?
Oh, we're talking about the, the issue of a non-conforming use is in Title 8, so you'd have to go back to read eight dash three, I believe. But let, let me throw you, let me, if I may, let, let's talk about a hypothetical. Let's assume I was, by the way, my client already owns this property. But in any event, let's say that I was looking for a place to operate a, this type of facility. And I had one in mind, I signed a contract to buy it, subject to whatever approvals that I was gonna need. And I went in and I said to the, the planning department, "Can I run a general automotive repair facility on this property in this zone?" One of the things they would do is look at the zone to see if it's a permitted use, just like you've done. Then I would say, "Well, even though it's not permitted now, it was permitted previously." And, and, and it, so therefore, when the regulation got changed, when this got changed from whatever zone it was in in 1966, in the business local zone, that use became a non-conforming use. And it remains a non-conforming use until it's abandoned. And I've described to you what I think the law says in terms of what abandonment is. At that point, the zoning enforcement officer would most likely sign off and say, "You're right." And they'd put their name on a piece of paper saying, "You comply, even though you're not allowed in this zone now, since you are a legal, non-conforming use, you're able to operate in this particular zone." And that's where it would go, and that's where it would end. And you've got your zoning enforcement officer, I believe, telling you now that that is the case.
Our zoning enforcement officer, oh, unless you're saying that Lori.
Who you zoning as well is.
I am not currently the zoning enforcement officer. However, I used to be the president of Casio, and I am a certified zoning officer. And as the director of Development Services and essentially the acting town planner, I concur with what Carl Andalina just said. I, I would like to maybe read for you the section of non-conforming uses from our zoning regulations.
What page are you on?
I've got an old copy that's all marked up, but it's section 3.40.4. And it says, "Any use of a building or lot which was legally in existence prior to the adoption of these regulations," which is January 31st, 2002.
Hold on a minute, give me the section again, because I'm not finding it. Hang on. Okay.
All right, so reg, uh, prior to the adoption of these regulations, January 31st, 2002. All right. So, prior to the adoption of these regulations, January 31, 2002, or amendments thereto, and is not permitted within the zoning district in which it is located, shall be designated a nonconforming use. Such use may continue, subject to paragraphs B, C, and D below. And it goes on. So, they talk about no expansions, no nonconforming use. Once, if once changed to a conforming use, be changed back to such nonconforming use. And then-
Okay.
And that statement, Lori, that statement you just read there-
Answers the question.
Is exactly what Commissioner Turner's talking about. You just-
It hasn't been abandoned.
If a use leaves and, and becomes conforming, then it cannot go back to the old use again.
Respectfully, I would, Mr. Chair, those of the board, tell you that that, in your zoning regulations, is no longer enforceable, given the change in the statute three years ago.
That's what I was about to get to.
Well, I'm looking at our latest version of this thing that you just sent me, and if it's not supposed to be there, why would we put it in revised June 11, 2020?
I'm not, I can't answer that question. That's, that's, you know, that's in the zoning commission. They write the regulations. I'm saying that, just reading it like that and taking the understanding, I believe your take is not correct under the current status of the law.
But you're saying-
Right.
You're saying, under the status of the law-
Right.
I have to determine whether I believe the owner abandoned the use of the property or not. And I believe when the owner of the automotive repair facility sold the property and no longer had claim to it, and no other K7 has been put forth on that property since, the use was abandoned.
Because if you're telling me that page 31 of our zoning book says, "No nonconforming use shall, if once changed to a conforming use, be changed back to such nonconforming use," is, are you trying to tell me that the electrical warehouse, vaping building, vaping store were still considered nonconforming, Jen slash Lori?
Yes. So, what I was getting to was the fact that we have always had in our regulations, nonconforming use section, that allows the nonconforming use to continue. The case law, which Attorney Landelina is referring to, which occurred, I want to say, two, maybe three years ago, states that the abandonment must be specific and finite. They might, they basically have to say in writing that they are abandoning the use, and that's what we're going to be putting in our regulations with the update.
You're saying, basically, they have to say that. What exactly does the law state?
We just told you. That's what it states.
The law states that we have to decide whether or not the owner willingly abandoned the use of the property.
Well, actually, no. The zoning board of appeals doesn't have that purview. Only the planning and zoning commission does. Your purview is to determine whether this location is right for this use or not.
If it, if it's out of the, where it should be, then it's not right for the, the property.
That's not the question. The question is, is this use, as it has been since 1966, does it meet the requirements under your purview?
Okay. I still think that we should get a legal opinion to clear that up. Technically, I would just like us to delay a little bit till we get it. So, it's in writing, and we can put the addendum in our book, waiting for you guys to update.
We're in the process. We certainly could do that.
And I would not have an issue if we, and I would request the commissioner, if we moved our meeting up next month. Do we have anything pending, Jen, for our next month's meeting?
Not yet. It's kind of early to tell, but that's, right now, we don't have any other applications.
And we don't, we don't have any out there that you know about?
Uh, there is a, I mean, we, we get questions about places around town, but, I mean, until people actually file applications, we won't know. But either way, I mean, we'll, we can put the legal opinion request in, and as soon as we get it back, we will let you know and see if we can get a meeting.
Because I, I'm not speaking for all the other commissioners, but I'm sure that we, since none of us are allowed to leave the building, that we move next month's meeting up by two weeks, and so this can move forward and that delayed longer. I don't know how long they've waited on the agenda, or what they were planning previous to being here today. But I just think it's a question we should ask, since our zoning rules are clear that this is a BL zone, and we don't have motor vehicle things in it. But if you come back and tell us that that's the way it is, then that's the way it is.
We certainly could get the opinion, or the request for the opinion up tomorrow, and we'll, we'll try to put a rush on it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a request that we ask for the legal opinion regarding the nonconforming use and the question of abandonment.
Draft it up so it's worded the way you want it?
Well, I could type something up and send it to you for review, to send it to Lori and Jen.
I don't necessarily need to review it. I'm just, you, you want a certain opinion, make sure that it's, you put it in writing so that they ask the, the question you want to ask.
I would like to have my commissioners chime in to see if they'd like that.
Are there any other questions of the commission?
Can you hear me okay, Maurice?
Yep.
So, my question would be, is, if that's the only thing that is going to hold this up, couldn't we somehow write this that we don't even need to get together for, for another meeting? If that opinion came down and it was in their favor, that we just go ahead and grant it?
Oh, you couldn't do that.
So, you'd have to have the meeting regardless?
Yes.
You, you would still have to take action on it as a board.
In, in order to do that, Charlie, you would have to close the public hearing to vote on it. So, at that point, anything-
Well, I guess I go along with Mary Ann then, that if we can move up the next meeting to move this along, I'd like to see it rather than drag it out.
Anybody else have any comments?
I just have one question, going back to the, the Aqua Fire question. You mentioned the only other automotive work that would be done is probably brake systems, and I assume that is handled in accordance with disposing of brake fluids and such. Nothing else beyond brake systems?
Well, we've got my client here, and he probably can describe the act, the uses. Maurice, are you here?
Yes, hi. Yeah, it will be on the car service, which is brakes, muffler, shock and struts, and front end work and alignment. Basically, there's no engine work, there's no transmission work, there's no rear end work. It's a light automotive repair, and there's no change of oil, there's no, it's really a clear cut of changing hard part, broken parts, and putting in new parts.
No, no brake fluid draining, things like that as part of-
Strictly, strictly brake jobs, shock and struts, it's all metal. You take a puff, you dissolve it, you put a, a new part, and basically tires and alignment. So, that's what we call a light automotive repair. Northwest mission building, engine building, it's, it's clean work, in other words.
I, Rich, I do, I want to answer your question a little differently, and I want everybody to be aware of that, that when we give an approval for automotive repair, that then opens the door. He may say, "I'm not doing oil changes, I'm not doing this." But once we approve it, he can do anything he wants for repair. So, it, it, you know, it could change into a jiffy lube, or, you know, he could do whatever he wants once we approve it.
Well, Aquifer would have purview, and they have, DEEP gets involved, and the Department of Public Health gets involved, and the water companies all get involved, and they have very strict standards for-
I understand, but that-
Storing and disposing.
That would also fall under us for safety. Environmental safety is, would be the same as traffic safety, or, you know, anything, it's still public safety.
And Jennifer, in line with what you just said, then, if, if they start working on anything other than the, the light mechanical stuff, the physical stuff, is, is there regular inspections? I think you touched on this before. Is there regular inspections of the shop?
Yes. We have the right to inspect randomly facilities to make sure that what, what they're storing and what they're disposing of on site will have no impact on the water quality in the Aquifer protection zone.
Additionally, the fire marshal has a right to go out there and do an annual inspection. So, I would think the fire marshal would be out there once a year.
Okay. So, so if their service does change based on, or from whatever they're saying today versus what they might be doing, or maybe they get into oil changes, whatever, it would be incumbent upon the inspection to pick that up and evaluate based on any environmental risks, based on what, Commissioner, what, what we've talked about here?
Yeah. And the Aquifer Protect, Protection Agency regulations require re-registration of uses after so many years. So-
How many years roughly?
I think it's five.
Okay. Now, and, and, and not, not to this applicant, but that's a long time that anyone can do a lot of damage to the environment. And I'm not suggesting that the applicant would, would do that, but thank, thank you. Just knowledge for me.
So, can, so what about the, the parking, and where customers will be, and the vape shop will still be there, and the entrance and the exiting onto Route 5 or Willard? Can someone just describe that to me?
Can I answer that, Carl?
I'd do my best. Go ahead.
Okay. The building have ample parking lot. We have approximately 40 to 50, which is too much, parking spots. They, can you hear me? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
There's park for, parking for customers, parking for employees, there's ample parking throughout the years. It's all marked, it's all clear, it's all paved, and it's marked, if you look at the building, at the parking lot, it's all freshly marked, handicapped, regular, and everything else. The enter and exit, there's like three or four exits and enters, so there's really, in my opinion, there's no danger to go in and out from the property to the road. And I'm sure you can inspect it anytime.
Well, the people, when I was driving up there, it's, it's easy to come into your parking lot from heading north. How, but would you be directing people to go out Willard before they cross the two lanes of traffic?
If you're going from Enfield towards Long Meadow, you can, you have a wide entrance, you take a right to the property.
Right.
And then, if you leave the property, you can also, they have lines, you can go to Route 5. In addition, on Willard, I think, Street, Willard Street and Route 5, there's a wide enter and exit. Also, you go to Willard, and then you go to Route 5. Also, you can go, there's an exit and interest by the old Friendly's. If you're familiar with the old Friendly's right next door, so you can go through it. So, there's like three or four. So, it's, there's not, in other words, there's no congestion as far as going in and out to Route 5, or Willard, or that other side.
So, because, so I didn't realize that you could, your property circled around the old restaurant, that you could come in and out, that there was a break through the-
Yeah, there's a big, that's been there since, I think, from 30, 40 years. There's a, a, an opening, you can go in and out.
Okay.
Plus-
Yeah.
A light plus open in and out to Route 5, if you're coming from Enfield to Long Meadow, or vice versa, from Long Meadow to Enfield. So, in my opinion, it's, it's pretty comfortable, it's pretty clear to go in and out to the property.
And so, the vape shop is staying in that area called rented space?
Yes. When I bought the building, you have one more year on the lease, and legally, you have to keep them there. And I think he's got a, a small portion of the building, he got his own parking spots, he got his own handicap spots, for him to operate vape shop.
And how are you going to handle the property line between you and the neighbors on Willard, on the backside?
I'm glad you mentioned it, because when I bought the building, or I was in the process of buying it, I met the neighbors in the back of the building, Howard and Cheryl. I forget, I mean, I'm blank on the last name, but they were the one, the main concern from the old owner, I guess they had some, but with the old owner, the old trailer, or whatever. Basically, at my expense, cost me a lot of money, I had, I made a buffer zone between my building and their land. And that particular piece of property, the old owner was using for trailers to go in, and used to be a loading dock right on the corner.
Right.
And when, when I bought it, they asked me, "Please, can you eliminate that?" By the way, I mean, I had said that it cost me 30, almost 40 grand to eliminate, excuse me, the old dangerous loading dock, which I really didn't need it, and I was wanting to, the neighbors happy. And they told me, "We want that buffer to be neutral, like a buffer zone." So, basically, what I did, I paved it, I cleaned it, eliminated the loading dock. It, it was a week worth of work for a company to get rid of, get rid of. And if you look at the building before and after, you won't believe the improvement. And I'm sure you're more than welcome to call Howard and Cheryl, again, I forgot the last name, from Willard Street, and also the neighbor from across the street, which was right behind Boston Seaford. And according to, to me and them, it was a major improvement for cleaning, safety, and basically, all, back of the building was one huge dumpster. Right now, you can talk about more.
Yeah, I saw it.
And you can see it anytime, or you could call the neighbors. My main concern was the neighborhood, and believe me, they are, would be the first one to approve me as a, as a business, as a neighbor.
Can I ask you what you're planning your hours to be?
Basic, normal, 7:30 to 6 weekdays, 7:30 to 4 Saturdays, closed Sundays, and closed all legal holidays, et cetera.
Okay. Lori, since, I mean, is the planning office going to set up those, the standard, the, the normal standards for a business, like he just mentioned, where he'll put his dumpster, the vet buffer, the hours of operation, any of those things, so that they're not, since, I'm looking for my list, you know, the general conditions that zoning would put on?
As long as he, they meet what general conditions are, there'll be, you know, we, we kind of look at it, but for the most part, it's, it never really is an issue.
That's not what I asked you.
Are we going to require him to be open certain hours?
No. No. I asked if you were going to use the general conditions that planning and zoning already has that they use for all of their stuff, because from the stuff that I keep reading over and over, it's the planning office that would be the ones, you know, let's call this overseeing that part, the hours, where the dumpster will go, you know, all those things that planning and zoning normally does. Have you guys reviewed-
Tried to get them to comply with that, yes. Tried to get them to comply with that, yes.
I'm sorry, it's hard for them, hard for you?
No, we, we tried to get them to comply with it, but again, it is a non-conforming site. So I mean, there's certain things that are just not going to be able to comply with.
Can you give me an example?
Setbacks.
Right, but again, setbacks, I understand, because once you get the answer on the non-conforming use, that's, that's going to answer that. I'm talking about the things, they're just, like he, I know he's made the effort to clean up the property and I know he's made an effort to be a good neighbor, which has been lacking for a while. I'm just asking if the planning office is just going to oversee. And again, I'd have to go through them all. They have a standard group of them, but like where the dumpster is going to go. You know, I don't know where, that's what I'm asking you.
That's what I'm saying, we, we're, where there, where it certainly makes sense, we can, but we can't make them change the setbacks or things of that nature, which are part of conditions of approval. So yes, we certainly tried to get them to comply as much as feasibly possible.
So I'm going to go back to my commissioners. Are you open to the idea to get the legal question in front of our guys or girls, asking about legal non-conformity and considerment of abandonment? What, what do you, what do you say? This isn't me, we're, there's five of us.
Right, we've heard from Charlie. Does anybody else have any, any comments they want to throw at us with that or?
Andrew?
Sure, I mean, I, I, I'd say I'm okay with, with the board taking that route, that's, that's fine. I, I do have a question for the applicant, if I can ask that, maybe after we do this part.
Nope.
Okay. Uh, the question's on the, uh, the, the vehicles, if I pull up like the GIS image of this, part of the paved areas in the state right of way. And I just wonder what the plan is for continued parking there. Is there going to be a lease with the state on that and that's going to continue? Or is that not going to be parking? And that's just a, just a safety question coming in and out of the site.
So Attorney Abanowitz, I'm not aware of any lease agreement between the property owner and the state of Connecticut. If you look up and down Route 5 in this area especially, the pave width of Route 5 is only about half the, the width of the, of the right of way. And this business, like most of them in this area, have paved parking inside of the right of way. Uh, if the state of Connecticut decides that they want us to enter into a lease agreement with them, we'd be glad to do it. Thus far, I'm not aware of any property owners along Route 5 who have written leases with the state of Connecticut. There could be some that I'm not aware of, but if they ask us to do that, we would certainly do that. If they wanted to widen Route 5 on our side of the street, you, you know, some of those improvements would probably disappear.
Um. Andrew, did you have the GIS up on your computer?
Yeah, I was, I was looking at it. So it was just, it was a question that came to mind. I, I know some of the other, other property owners have had issues with that, so I was just kind of curious if that was going to stay or not stay or.
Because in this application, I was surprised that I didn't have any aerial photographs or anything like that. So, um, I mean, other than visual, this is the inside of the building, which we have no say about, other than the outside parking lot. I was curious about why it was missing from the application. Do, did you guys receive anything in the office, Jen?
Uh, no, normally, normally I do print that and I, I usually do that in the office on the GIS. As part of my staff report. Um, I can certainly add that, or we can, I can't personally screen share because I'm recording, but if someone wanted to screen share and show the GIS.
Okay, one of you GIS people do, since we're looking, and last thing is, are we in agreement to ask for the legal opinion or not? Mo, I can't hear you.
I said, I believe you have a census of agreement with the board.
Kelly?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. Also, i- if we could just move the meeting up, because I just don't want to delay it too much longer. You know, you were saying, you know, move it up like two weeks, the next meeting.
Yeah, that would, yeah, it would just come down to if Jen's able to get it in front of the legal quick, you know, this week, they may have an answer for us by next week and we can probably be back on the docket for the week after that.
Yeah.
Charlie?
Yep, no, I agree with that.
Rob?
Yeah, I, I, we should get a, a legal opinion. I mean, there's some, it seems clear, but then there's law that, some cases that it just goes on. So to be clear about it, I'm good with it.
So in other words, let's just put it in our book. Rich, what are you thinking?
I think it's safer to have it and it protects both the applicant and the town and obviously this commission or this board. Trying to pull up the GIS for you while I do this.
Then do we need to get the applicant to agree to the delay?
Um, you can just continue the public hearing. Today would be the first day of the public hearing opening. So you have plenty of statutory time.
What's our normal, what's the, what's the range of open delay?
Thirty-five days.
Thirty-five days.
Thirty-five days, yep.
Then we should be able to do it next month.
We appreciate the accommodation. First of all, we want you to get the information that you need, obviously. If you think that you need this, then you should have it. Secondly, we also appreciate your accommodation to move the meeting up a little bit. So we're not waiting another month. We don't, we don't have to consent. You don't need to ask us for our consent, because you have the right, but, but we certainly consent if you, whatever it is you think you need.
Attorney Landleena, I guess I just would rather have it in the record.
Yeah, I understand.
And I, and I hate to say this to you, but it always builds on anything that comes down the road.
Correct.
So if it gets you cleaned up, clean as a whistle, great.
Yep.
And then we don't have to talk about it again.
Right, I agree, I agree.
Now I'm looking at the. Rich, did you, you brought this up?
Yes.
Okay, can you?
This, this is what I believe Andrew was talking about.
That is the property line, yes.
Parking to the applicant. You said you had about fifty, fifty or so parking spaces.
Forty, forty to fifty.
That are on the old restaurant property?
No. Right on the front.
On the front, there's twenty parking spaces.
And on the side of the building.
There's a dozen there.
There's fifteen, roughly almost fifteen. So it's roughly, there's like forty.
I, I, if I may jump in, Carl and Delina for the record, I think my client was adding the spaces in the state right of way. So I don't, you know, on the property proper, there's clearly not fifty, but there's a significant number of spaces there.
I don't typically count anything that's off the property.
Right.
Because as I've said before, we don't, we can't give permission to use somebody else's property.
Right, and I can, and, and I can see where you have all the entrance and exiting. So that, that area is so busy, especially with that gas station and the crazy driving you up at that end, to get into that, that gas station up there. I mean, I've actually drive in the southbound lane to make a left-hand turn. It strikes me, it's like, holy moly. Okay, well, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the meeting about two weeks. We should, that would bring us, well, maybe three, oh, later than January eleventh. I think we should be able to have our answer by January eleventh.
Well, word in a way, where if you don't, we're not having a meeting just to have one without an answer.
And I think we move our legal department along.
You're not going to rush them.
That's true. Because our next meeting is scheduled for the twenty-fifth. Jen?
I mean, I would just motion to continue and we'll, we'll do our best to get a very fast town attorney opinion.
All right.
A special meeting doesn't have to be held on a Monday, right?
Right, and Jen, Jen can send us a survey to find where we're all available and we can just get it done for them.
And I believe, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't have to be a legal notice, correct?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Carl and Delina, unless you pick a specific date tonight and you ju- and you just, if you leave it open to some date you're going to agree on in the future, you will have to post another legal notice.
Thought we had gotten notice before from the town attorney that automotive repair facilities didn't need a, a legal notice.
You, so there is the option, and I had, I found an old legal opinion from Maria Elston from just last year for existing facilities, you, the board can waive a public hearing if they want to. But if you don't want to waive the public hearing requirement, then I would just, you'd have to continue to meeting or a specific date, either way, we'll.
Well, what I don't want to happen is that the attorney and the applicant can't talk to us. So.
But this is already a public hearing, so it has to continue as a public hearing. We think that would benefit everybody. If you can't choose a date tonight, you'll just have to pick one and then we'll have to wait at least ten days after that to get the notice, you know, the notice is published. And we have to have the public hearing no sooner than ten days after it goes up.
Okay, so Attorney Landleena, if the worst scenario happens, we'll put you back in the docket first thing for January's meeting. If we can get our ducks in a row and get whatever we got to get, we have already shown you that we don't want to hold you up.
Understood.
Come back together.
Okay, we'll leave that to you and staff to determine.
So why don't we just leave it at that?
That's fine, yep. No, we appreciate that accommodation.
Chairman, are you, you're okay with that? Can't hear you.
Yes.
Okay.
So go ahead with your motion.
So I make a motion that we get a legal opinion regarding what abandonment by a previous owner means. It does the sale of a property considered abandonment? Or does it have to be a written document from the owner that that's abandoned? And then if you have a legal non-conforming use, it technically comes, in our zoning rules, say that this new, this, I don't know how I'm wording this properly. Hang on, I need the section again.
That, that was the thirty point four point two, whatever, where it changes from non-conforming to conforming, right?
Where BL zone, it does no longer accepts motor vehicle repair garages. Okay, does a non-conforming use preempt that? Jen, you probably have to write that in more proper request of lawyer language, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Two questions. What does abandonment mean? Non-conforming with the BL zone? Mr. Chairman, has that kind of covered? Okay.
I have a motion by Mary Ann, do I have a second? I have a second. Who was that, Charlie?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mola Rosa.
Yes.
Andrew Abanowitz.
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner, yes. Charlie Master Birdy.
Yes.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
Okay. So we will postpone that till next month?
Or not earlier if possible.
Well, it'll be January either way.
Right.
Not our next meeting, let's try to be early.
All right, thank you for your time, I appreciate it. And Merry Christmas to everyone.
Take care, Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much.
Bye, guys.
Next, we have the approval of our minutes from our November meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second is by, was that Andrew? Any discussion? None, roll call, please.
Mola Rosa.
Yes.
Andrew Abanowitz.
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner. Charlie Master Birdy.
Yes.
What?
Just background noise from the applicant.
Kelly Davis.
Yes.
Remember, everybody, don't throw your paperwork away. We'll print another set.
Do you have anything for us, Jen?
Um, I believe you skipped the review of bylaws.
Oh, I did.
We moved.
All right, let's read, I know you want to get those bylaws in. Everybody have a chance to look over?
Yeah.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Made by Kelly, seconded by Mary Ann. Discussion.
I had them on my desk, I knew I did. We've done these nauseam, I can't imagine that we've left anything out except a period or a comma, right?
Yes.
It looked pretty good to me when I read them.
I think they look good.
And you read, okay.
They look good.
I didn't see anything either. But they're bylaws, we could always do this again. Okay.
Nothing, nothing, roll call, please.
Mola Rosa.
Yes.
Andrew Abanowitz.
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner, yes. Charlie Master Birdy. Kelly Davis.
Yes.
Do I get the rest of these guys, Jen, or does it not matter?
Uh, that would be in the bylaws, actually.
Just get the rest of them, just to be thorough.
Rob Quaznicki.
Yes.
Kathy Plopper.
Yes.
Rich Strony.
Yes.
Okay, so we're all on the same page. So we've done that, we've done that and that. Now you're up to staff. Uh, thanks for the list and thank you for adding the, the term of expiration. Very helpful.
Yes, um, and just one other thing I wanted to let the board know, I know, Mary Ann, you had asked about a compliance form that the board had created. At some point, we did find one, actually accidentally in one of the files, so Rick has that now.
We'll take it.
So going forward, we'll, we'll make sure that we're using those forms, but, so I'll add a column to your application list. So that going forward, you'll know.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. For us old people, Mo, Charlie, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good, Andrew. All right, anything else?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. Just going back to that three point forty point four, item B. No, no non-conforming use shall if once changed to conforming, blah, blah, blah. Is that, that is in our, that is in the town zoning regulations. Do we not follow that or we do?
Well.
For me, that's confusing because it's in here.
This, this is why we have to update our zoning regulations, because it doesn't match the, uh, the state statutes and the case law. So that's the way, we've always allowed non-conforming uses to continue, but now we have, we always have to go back to, to case law. And we have an annual, uh, meeting with the CCAPA about case law, because it changes all the time. And the legislature changes, so the zoning regulations are supposed to keep up with them and these do not. But my point was that we've always allowed non-conforming uses to continue unless they are deliberately changed, but now it has to be done very specifically.
Uh, un- understood. My challenge, and, and I'm a little bit black and white on these things, I mean, this is. Uh, un- understood. Um, my challenge, and I'm a little bit black and white on these things. I mean, this is the booklet that I have. This is what I have to go by. I don't know case law, I don't follow case law. How do we know when case law overrides these items? If it's not in the June eleventh, twenty twenty version, right? And, and that's just me, more from my understanding and, and education, because this is what I have.
So.
And I realize case law changes regularly. I, I get that.
So we, we do go and tend to these seminars and workshops and whatnot, and that's one of the reasons that we're here is to help keep everything up to date and, you know, we get trained for that and we try to relay the information to you. I mean, you cannot, I mean, it's very hard to keep the zoning regulations up to date and they just haven't been in a long time. So once we get them updated, you know, we're gonna do our very best to make sure that we make the modifications as needed. And, and as we learn about it. But, you know, basically, we have to rely on, on attorneys and, and, and the workshops to tell us.
What's the timeline for correcting this?
Um, with, we're hoping to have both the P O C D and zoning regulations updated within about a year.
So I think if this information is inaccurate and it says black and white and I agree with Rich, I'm sorry, as far as I'm concerned, the answer is no. So, you know, then, then, then when we, when we come upon them like this, Lori, why don't we just have the, have the amendment added to the page or an addition that puts in front says, hey, everybody who's reading section point thirty.
Because it's a thirty-five day referral process to the plan, to the regional planning agency, just to change one word. So it's, it's a cumbersome process.
Okay, but if you can't change the, if you're, what you're, this is the reason I get confused with you, Lori. You're talking, telling me one thing, I have to follow a rule. And then you're telling me that other one is, those rules are wrong, but I can't fix them, but you gotta follow them because I told you so.
I'm not sure what else you, I can tell you. This is how most towns handle it. We try to keep things up to date, but these regulations are so out of date, they're contradictory.
But we just ran into this tonight. Then maybe, maybe it's no more than an additive sheet here and says, per zoning and ZBA meeting of December twenty-one, we found that section B says this, but per state laws, sticking on the words. And until they're updated.
Yeah, I, I take, you know, again, it doesn't make us as a town in a zoning board look good when we aren't aware of each other. And, and I recognize that, Lori, you and Jennifer are here to help us with those things that we couldn't possibly keep our hands on, but how do we make sure like tonight doesn't happen again where we're questioning which way
But let me stop.
We need to do it. And, and certainly getting a legal opinion is important, right? We'll get that from the town attorney, but how do we?
Let me kind of stop the discussion right now and pick it up next month at the next meeting. Because the discussion we're having could hinge on whatever the, the attorney says. We don't know that that's accurate or inaccurate until, until the attorney tells us their, their opinion. So let's not jump the gun and have the conversation just yet.
No, no, and, and understood. I was more just, okay, we, I just got these zoning regulations that I actually took a moment to read and
And I understand that.
And, and that's more my concern. How do we make sure we're doing right by our citizens, we're coming before us to make sure we're handling it properly? That's all.
This is exactly why we're updating the zoning regulations and we deal with this on a daily basis every time we look at them. We have to find that interpretation and we have to remember what the case law has been and we just try to keep up with it. Once we, once these are updated, I think it'll be a lot easier, but.
There are many things that over the years we've caught, um, both in the zoning regulations and even in the, um, the inland wetlands regulations, things that have changed that were never updated. And in twenty nineteen, we were able to compile, compile something like, it was like thirty different amendments to the wetlands regulations that were never done since two thousand and six, that were required by DEEP. And we just updated those last year. And now we're working on updating the zoning regulations, but every time you update the regulations, you have to hold a public hearing with planning and zoning and planning and zoning has to vote to approve the amendment or not. In non-COVID times, it's required that we have that thirty-five day review on top of the public hearing before planning and zoning to adopt amendments, whether the state statute requires them or not. Um, so, and, and I mean, now we have the opportunity with our consultant to move forward with updating the many things that require updating in the zoning regulations. And it's really not just this section either. Just last week, I had to put together a list of every comment and thing that I found in the zoning regulations over the last four years. And I've sent Lori an eight-page document of list with everything that is an issue in our regulations.
And I go back to something you just said, Jen. If it has to go in front of planning and zoning and they get to up and down vote it, let's go back to Rich's question. You know, they look at section three, forty, forty point four, and they say, yeah, like that the state FYI, but no, we're not, we're not voting for it. So they say, they, they, they say, leave it alone. Then what are you gonna do?
The state statute and the case law still trump the, the zoning regulations, so.
So it doesn't make sense that the planning and zoning group, whatever, to say no to any of it?
It, that would, in, in this case, it would make sense for, for them, if it was before them, to vote to approve something so that there isn't an inconsistency between state statute and local zoning regulations.
We would report to them the, the, the updates as well from the state statutes and case law.
What I do miss, and I have not seen in a very long time, was we used to get that newsletter that kind of, we got copies of it and it kind of told us about upcoming state law or different things. And we're, we haven't, do you not get that newsletter anymore?
I have to check the office, but I actually, now that you brought that to my attention, the last time we got that was, um, back when they were doing the Connecticut Federation, uh, luncheon and it was canceled for COVID. And that was sort of the last time I'd, I'd seen one of those.
I think it's quarterly.
I thought that, that was a great little newsletter and I kept them in a binder. Not that I'd ever remember to go dig through it to find it. So then, sorry.
We certainly could have, I, I think what they're doing now is emailing it. I think I did see one recently, so, um, we could certainly forward it on to you if we find it.
I'd love that. It's, it's a, it's an easy read and it's got good info in it. Um, I do want to ask a question. I sent all of you out an email, actually two so far, regarding the potential new zoning rules that the, the, um, legislature is considering putting into play regarding all the towns. And I didn't hear back from any of you. I thought for sure I'd interest a little, especially when I gave you the article about Woodbridge. I mean, didn't anybody read my email or did you just, I think I'll ignore her. She'll go away.
Is that an option, Mary Ann?
It's an option, but it doesn't mean that I'll really go away. It just means I'll go around you. But I thought it's something, I mean, Enfield, in our zoning rules, we have multi-housing sites. We have industrial and business zones. We have a lot of stuff in Enfield that a town like Woodbridge doesn't. But I'm giving you the FYI for my inside sources. Woodbridge is going to be the test case for that new zoning law that Hartford wants to blanket across a hundred and sixty-nine towns. I think we should be, we should be on the cutting edge of it. We should be paying attention, have conversations about it. Because when they go into Hartford and they do decide to open up for business again, they're gonna have public hearings. And I think we should be sitting there. Because it's really gonna impact maybe not us as hard as a Woodbridge, but I don't want government deciding how Enfield, I don't want Hartford government deciding how Enfield should be run and how our zoning should, what should be next to Kelly's house or what shouldn't be next to Kelly's house. You know, she bought her house thinking she lives in an R thirty-three zone. I don't want them to make a decision and says, okay, we're gonna make it all like Thompsonville, I'm making up a thing, but we're gonna make it all consistent and Kelly's now gonna get three neighbors on what used to be her backyard. And you may think that sounds ridiculous, but the world's ridiculous right now. What, I mean, did anybody?
I'll, I'll speak for myself, Mary Ann. I didn't ignore you. I just deferred reading it.
Okay, you put me in the bed.
Not for long, though.
Remember, I think it affects us in economic development, planning and zoning, zoning board of appeal. I mean, I just, I don't know. And I think we should all be paying attention.
Well, certainly it's something that we'll probably be discussing when we talk about, uh, the new zoning regulations as to whether or not we should be, um, concerned with that and how to deal with it, how to respond.
Well, I think we may not.
They want to take the character, or, you know, take character out of planning and that, that kind of can really ruin a neighborhood. So, you know, there's certainly, you've got absolutely valid concerns.
I just want us to be forward. I don't want us to become, um, this is what happened to you. I want to be able to be the one to decide what, what we didn't want to happen to us. And if that means stopping Hartford for some of the crazy crap they're gonna do, I'm in. I mean, Enfield should not suffer because, you know, somebody has this idea out of Hartford that's gonna wanna impact Woodbridge. That's my, I, I don't know. I just, I think we all get affected by it and we should, gotta stand with our neighbors. Again, guys, if we, if, if we want to take it outside of, you know, this could be a coffee klatch thing that we do ourselves. We don't have to do it because we're on planning and zoning.
It has the seventies revitalization there written all over it.
Doesn't it, Kelly?
It does.
And look what happened to Thompsonville when we did it.
Yep.
You know, I just, it worries, it worries me. Hey, I'm not gonna be here for another thirty years. But I should like to leave Enfield better than I found it. That was my point. So if you see emails from me, what you could do is say, Rich, busy, we'll read later. And then I'll think, oh, at least he saw it.
But don't imply, reply "oh" when you do that.
No, I'm gonna reply "oh". I want y'all to know that I'm replying to Mary Ann and I'm busy.
All right, does anybody have anything else?
Nothing here.
All right, well, I wish you guys all a Merry Christmas.
And.
Yeah, you as well.
Everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.